All right, it's 6:30. We'll call this meeting to order. Cameron, you want to do the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. Ryan O'Leary, ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the visible with a great kingdom of justice and law.
All right, thank you. Okay, Jacob, you want to do your roll call, please?
Chair Gary Cushing.
Here.
Vice Chair Jamie Labor.
Here.
Commissioner Aaron Todd.
Present.
Commissioner Cameron Carizales.
Here.
Commissioner Miguel Magallanes.
Here.
Okay, all commissioners are present. Okay, do we have any oral communications? This is the opportunity for citizens, presentations or comments not related to agenda items, but within the responsibility of the Fillmore Planning Commission. Each speaker's limited to five minutes. Do we have any speaker cards, Jacob?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, move on to the consent calendar. We have two items under consent. It's the minutes from the June 19th, 2024 Regular Planning Commission, and B5 is the minutes from the August 21st Regular Planning Commission. Do I have a motion?
But real quickly, before there's a motion on these items, I would suggest that the Planning Commission take these separately because of some commissioner absences. They're sort of separate combinations of who can vote.
Okay, does that mean we have to take them off of consent then?
They should be taken, yeah, or can be, I mean, that would be the formal thing to do, but it would be fine just to...
Take each one separately?
Yeah, for them to be considered separately.
Okay, well, number 5A, minutes of the June 19th, 2024 Regular Planning Commission meeting, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the June 19th, 2024 Regular Planning Commission meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You say there's only three of us here, one too. Okay. Let's call for question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. 5B, minutes of the August 21st, 2024 Regular Planning Commission meeting, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the August 21st meeting minutes. I'll second it.
And so the commissioners who are absent don't vote on this one?
Right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Okay, now we move on to 6, 6A, public hearing. Public hearing, consideration of modification number four to development permit 18-02, conditional use permit 18-02, and lot merger 1802, recreational vehicle sales, storage service, to change the project description and related changes to the architectural and engineering plans.
Good evening, Chair, Planning Commission, City of Fillmore. I'm Brian McCarthy. I'll be presenting this item. This item has been before this body in the past. This is modification number four. It's the Highway 126 LLC RV lot that you see under construction today. It's development permit 1802, CUP 1802, lot merger 1802. The location again is highlighted here in the red outline there, and that pink shading behind it, that's the commercial highway zone. So what's the commercial highway zone? It is intended to provide for office, retail, service-oriented businesses along the highway to service a community-wide regional need under the development standards to ensure compatibility and harmony with the adjacent neighborhoods. Various retail uses and RV sales are permitted. And the current DP that's before you, it was approved on the basis of having RV sales dealership with retail. We can get into that further. RV storage is not allowed in the commercial highway zone. That's in our code. So why would it have gotten approved? It was approved, but because it had retail, it had various buildings, and we'll discuss that more. I threw in an entitlement timeline. It's had quite an extensive history of administrative paperwork in starting in, well, the application, I believe, came in in 2018. It was approved by this body in 2019, and it's been through a series of modifications, the most significant of which was modification one. That's shown here. That was in December of 2019. And that was the one that mostly can change the, change the configuration and reduce some of the buildings. And then that also included a time extension on the entitlements. And then subsequent to that, there were, I believe, three additional time extensions granted. And then another important milestone here was your body had denied the last time extension. That was appealed. So update, it went to the city council. The city council overturned your appeal. They approved the time extension for one year. Prior to expiration of the one year, in July 2023, the, let me go back, Building C had achieved what was determined commencement of construction. So by having done commencement of construction on Building C alone was enough to get past the expiration of the entitlements at that time. And then they subsequently, after that, submitted modification number four to the entitlements. And modification four now includes additional changes to the site plan. This was the, and it's important that we go all the way back to the beginning because it's been through quite a series of modifications to kind of look at what was, what was the original project that was approved by the commission. And this is the site plan configuration here. As you can see, those letters denote the previous buildings, and then the numbers show other special features such as a windmill and those kinds of things, which have not changed. The original project description, we had to go back to look at what, where did we come from? You know, where were we originally, where did we come to today? It had these types of descriptions that were going into those buildings. Retail sales for RV supplies, parts, related showroom, administrative offices, vendor lease space, RV sales offices, vendor lease space, maintenance, storage, visitor and employee parking, indoor storage of large vehicles, and other site amenities. The operations were 6:00 AM to 8:30 PM. Those are now noted as 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Rather trivial of a change. And then it had employees, were between 20 and 25 persons amongst sales, parts, service, site maintenance, and vendor-operated restaurant space. That was the project description that was submitted by the applicant. And then it also had a resident manager living on site. The approved project, which was modification one, basically in terms of just site plan, modification, so the currently approved project, as it stands today, in terms of physical attributes, still 11 acres, RV sales, has just two buildings with, well, Buildings A and B. B is currently optional. And then Building C, which is the one aforementioned, which is under construction, it has 367 RV storage spaces, 41 sale spaces. And the applications have been blank on numbers of employees, so we don't know where that's tracking today. But this is the approved project. So were you not to approve mod four, this is what's under construction today, and this is what's been entitled today. And this doesn't go away with your decision tonight. This is the site plan that exists today under mod one. So you've got Building C, which has been mostly constructed, and you have Building A, which is required, because Building A has more of a retail component. Building B is the showroom. And the area in red is where the RV storage is located. So again, it's important to go back, mod one, there was, under mod one, the total building square footage was reduced from 30,746 to 16,036 square feet, a reduction of 14,000 plus. So that was mod one, and that's the project you have today with the 16,036 square feet, which is that reduction from original. And then this is the proposed modification four, which would be to construct Building B instead of Building A. And when someone proposes it as optional, staff has to look at that as not being constructed in terms of compliance with the code. This is the applicant-proposed changes as described in the conditions of approval. So you can see here that Building A would be reduced from 5936 to 4252. And then Building B would be, the name would be changed to retail sales slash a vendor to match the name in Building A. However, the floor plan is relatively the same uses as the original Building B. Is everybody with me?
Can you hold it there for me?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. And the total square footage under modification four would take your approved project building square footage from 16,036 to 13,704. So it's swapping, it's Building B plus a reduction of close to 2,300 square feet. Okay. And to look at the floor plans, if you'd like, on Buildings A and B, I include those as separate exhibits just because the size is kind of hard to read. So just bear with me one sec. I'm going to pull that up. This is the approved Building A. So this is what's required to be built under the existing entitlements. So mod four didn't go forward. This is what would be required. You can see the retail denoted there on Building A. It has a showroom component, restrooms, and it has what they're calling a vendor office slash caretaker. And then the floor plan for Building A under the current architecture looks like this. More or less the same types of uses, just reconfigured. But again, this is proposed to be optional, which means staff would consider this not to be constructed. It will not be constructed for purposes of our analysis. So that's Building A. And then I'll look at, a quick look at Building B and how that's changed. This is the previously approved Building B. So this is what would be optional under today's entitlements to be constructed. It includes a showroom, a sales area, break room, conference, and offices. And the proposed modification for Building B, which would be constructed, not optional, is the same types of uses, just slightly reconfigured. Again, it's showroom, offices, and the sales area, conference room. So the uses in Building B aren't, don't appear to have the retail component that was originally part of Building A, but it hasn't been fully fleshed out and defined as to what's going in. And I'll continue on. The applicant is here, so maybe they can elaborate a little bit more on some of those changes. The approved parking would change as shown here. It would go from a total rental spaces. It would be reduced by three. And it looks like the sales display spaces, so that's where the four-sale RVs would be parked along the frontage, stays at 41. So tonight, if you direct staff to move forward and prepare a resolution for approval of modification four, we would be looking at other, less important, less critical components of the project that would be refined between us and the applicant. But we don't want to go through all the refinements and resumitals without knowing where we're headed with this in terms of the mod four in general. So were you to want to approve mod four, we would also seek additional feedback from you related to the building in A, the reduction of sizes, whether that's acceptable in addition to the swapping. And also the landscaping. The landscaping came up short when it was originally approved, and I think we had been anticipating a resumittal of landscaping that would comply. However, it's stayed at 7.2. The mod four includes a plan that's, I think, a little bit north of 8%. The Ventura Street Design Guidelines, however, require 12%. And when you're in for a modification, staff is required to look at the entire project as a whole and how it complies with current standards. We don't just look at one proposed change. We look at how that affects the entire project. So that's why some of the things get tripped up when you come in for modifications. Parking tabulations need to be refined, make sure the uses match up with our code. Additional details are being requested to understand more specifically what the operations are going to be inside of those buildings and those numbers of employees. Some of that stuff, as outlined before, were described in the originally approved project, and we're just looking for more information at this stage when you're under construction or seeking building permit. We typically have a little bit more information as to who's going to be the tenants and further descriptions on operations. So we would work that kind of stuff out if we move forward with this. And then the other thing you do when you come in for modifications for entitlements, you're obligated to look at the existing conditions. Has the existing conditions changed that would change the project a bit or have new conditions of approval? So in looking at existing conditions today, five years after the original permit, what's changed is that we have vendors, food vendors, basically outdoor restaurants that are setting up at the south side of the highway, and they've grown to be quite substantial. We get a numerous amount of complaints about those, particularly from the local restaurant owners, because they're taking business away from our brick-and-mortar businesses, because obviously their overheads are much lower. Plus, they don't have any type of traffic study or anything associated with these. So we have, we do have vehicles coming in and out of these outdoor restaurants and coming on and off the highway without any type of traffic control whatsoever. We've had a lot of accidents down there. I think there was a death a couple of months ago we think may be related to this, because it changes traffic patterns. It changes people's behavior when you see cars coming in and out the way they are. So looking at that, we looked at this project and saw the same sort of condition setting up where we have a wide space between the edge of asphalt and the sidewalk, where there's an earthen berm, but not enough of a barrier there or landscaping or curb or anything of that sort that would deter restaurants or even trucks from parking along that side. So we thought we would work with the applicant to see if we could come up with a solution to that were you to direct us to go forward with mod four. If we stay with what we have today, we might still ask for something, but there wouldn't be an entitlement requirement associated with that. The project had a previously prepared mitigated negative declaration under SEQA. And SEQA is also one of the laws that requires us to look at existing conditions. We don't see that there's any significant change from an environmental SEQA standpoint. Staff's recommendation is to receive the staff report, open the public hearing, receive testimony, provide staff comments and direction regarding modification four, specifically on issues in the key requests that were previously summarized, if you direct us to go forward with it. And then third, close the public hearing and direct staff to prepare resolutions accordingly and potentially revise the conditions of approval as we work through some of those details that we mentioned and based on the direction given. I'm here to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is here to also present.
Can you go back to slide 17?
Sure.
Okay, do you want us to take, do you want to take questions, or you want the applicant to?
This would be a good time to ask, if there are questions for staff specifically, or only to staff, this would be a good time to ask those.
Brian, could you go to slide 15, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, do you want, okay, go ahead.
All right, so I do have a question. So I was on the planning commission back when this project first came through. I remember conversations at that time about contacting Caltrans, about traffic signal at that location. And then we also had conversations about undergrounding utilities. So first question is, has there been any follow-up communication about traffic signal? I know at that time, the applicant seemed like they were willing to contact Caltrans and start the process for, you know, looking at a traffic signal there. Because that was one of the concerns that you brought up, was the traffic pattern, the traffic flow there. And so we've had these conversations in the past, so I just want to get an update on where we are with that.
So far, we've been managing it under the existing conditions of approval. And the conditions of approval addressed the warrant. It had a list of items that the applicant had to complete in information to be provided to Caltrans. Caltrans had determined that the warrants for a signal weren't met under the initial submittal. And then we took it further in the modification one conditions of approval, saying, well, there are, even though you don't empirically meet some of that data, there are other considerations. And so the conditions of approval in mod one had an extensive list, I believe it was A through J, however many letters that is, of bits of information that he had to provide to further prove whether a signal was or wasn't warranted. And he provided that information. Your question, though, is timely, because we don't have updates in terms of a traffic study. So a few years have gone by, and the traffic analysis hasn't been updated to date. So it's been a few years, you know, since we actually looked at that from a data standpoint and from an analytical standpoint. And we're operating under the existing conditions of approval. That could be something that could get baked into the modification four conditions of approval, if that goes forward. But if we don't go forward with mod four, they've complied with it, what we have on paper.
Yeah, it's just, it's a dangerous location.
Yes.
If you're, so the project's on the north side of the highway. If they're coming out, they want to go east, they're going to have to make that left across there. That's dangerous. And the same for people coming in. They're going to have to make that left across eastbound or westbound traffic to get in there. I know, I know, we have those conversations. I still think it's something that's on my mind just from a safety standpoint of people, you know, entering and exiting that property. And then the other question was just about undergrounding utilities. I think, if I remember right, we had requested that they underground, and then, I think, when it went to the city council, maybe, did it? I can't remember what happened there.
The planning commission at that time, because before my time, Kevin can correct me, but I believe the planning commission had required the undergrounding of the utilities along the frontage as part of the conditions of approval, and maybe somewhere interior as well. The applicant appealed your decision. It went to the city council shortly after that. I want to say March or somewhere early 2019, city council upheld the appeal and removed the condition that required undergrounding. We haven't resurrected that under mod four. But again, modifications are subject to total review.
I have a question in regards to the potential traffic flow or something like that. Has city or staff considered a thought about if vehicles exited westbound on the 126 and the closest turnaround point, safest turnaround point would be Mountain View, potentially possibly putting in like a flashing yellow left turn to try to minimize the amount of traffic that comes through here, especially in the summer when traffic's backed all the way up past where this location's going?
So a flashing yellow at the signal that's at Mountain View?
Correct.
So just change that signal timing and, okay. We haven't, because there hasn't been a proposed change under mod relative to, a significant change relative to the traffic generation of the project. But we haven't technically reanalyzed existing conditions today. If the existing conditions have significantly changed or not, we would have to get new data. And we could require a traffic, an updated traffic study to analyze the project as it relates to current conditions, if modification four goes forward. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question. So this project was approved in a commercial highway zone based off of the idea that this will have sales or retail. Is that correct?
Correct.
At that time, I wasn't part of the planning commission at the time of approval. Was it dictated how much sales or retails was required?
It wasn't dictated. It was, but it was noted on the floor plan. So if you go to what was Building A, you see the retail noted there?
Correct.
And then there was an actual narrative project description that was submitted by the applicant's architect with their plans. That project description was in the staff report that was heard by the planning commission. That staff report is attached to your packet. And I put the language, the description from that staff report, which is from the applicant. Bear with me one second. Here. This was the description as it was understood at the time for the project when it was originally approved. And the second, then slide right after this continues.
Has the applicant, has the applicant stated why they're asking for a reduction in?
The most we can ascertain is maybe as convenience, perhaps, that they would prefer to build Building B instead of A because it's the showroom that's closer to the Building C, I believe. And then recollecting back when we did modification one or looking back at the record, it appeared as if Building A, the understanding at the time that Building A, having the retail, was to be located at the driveway, so there was easier access in and out. So were one to want to visit Building A, they wouldn't have to drive as far through the RV sales lot. They would be able to pull to that building and potentially buy something that's described here, RV sales, supplies. And then it was also described that there would be a restaurant.
Has the applicant and city had discussions about possibly keeping the same layout in approved Building A and swapping it to the location of Building B?
That was our original understanding of what they wanted to do. But the floor plan of Building B is relatively the same as the original Building B, which is a showroom. And the reason Building B was optional is because it's a covered showroom for RV sales. So it didn't make, it wasn't a substantial difference in terms of the commercial highway compliance, whether the RVs were sold from inside a structure or they were on an open lot. Because you still had RV sales as a component of the commercial highway zone compliance. In addition, you had Building A, which offered other retail, which is a separate distinct description from what's a showroom.
Was, has, I guess my question is, was the applicant open to the idea of keeping the approved Building A, which is not optional under the approved plans now, and in mod four would be switching that current layout, so nothing changes, and placing it in the location of B? Or is it strictly a change in services that they're trying to achieve here?
It doesn't appear to be a change. It doesn't appear to be a change in services. They can maybe elaborate, but it looks to be a change in the name of the building.
Yeah.
So the, they would call building B retail sales vendor. And I, I believe it's their, I believe it's their, they're, they're putting forth that RV sales is what satisfies retail. RV sales is retail, right? That's, that's, I believe is what they're saying. So, so we've met retail. And that's why it's important to go back and look at, well, was there RV sales and something else called retail? Which wasn't, wasn't called RV sales. It was called retail.
Correct.
And there was something called RV sales.
Correct.
And so that, that language may mean that the commission wanted something more to demonstrate compliance with commercial highway zone. Cause having RV sales, again, with or without a showroom is still RV sales and building B is the showroom. Is that?
Do you have any question?
All right, not right now.
Okay. Um, so in the RV showroom, um, there's not too many RV places that I've been to that actually has RVs inside.
Okay.
So, could that be RV retail for items that are used by RVers, campers? And that would satisfy more of a retail than giving him more than just RV sales. It'd be RV sales plus retail.
That was some of the language that was anticipated in the original, original staff report. The building B that they're proposing today, which would be, which would be constructed, not optional, is shown here. So there isn't, there isn't a word that says retail here. It's called showroom, which is where they're gonna park new RVs to sale. And then it has offices. It looks like supporting sales of RVs. But it doesn't, it, it, they haven't put forth a proposal that there would be some other retail vendor, leasing, leased space to a retail vendor or something where, you know, you have another cash register, so to speak, that's, you know, selling something. It looks like it's just, are, it looks to be just RV sales and, and they've, they've said it's RV sales. And that, and that that meets the retail, I believe. We don't have a description of, of, of beyond that at this point.
Well, it seems like they've got a whole big area here that they would, would wanna put retail in there to sell things.
Yeah. And again, that, you know, that's the, that's why building A, I believe was at the driveway, you know?
Well, I'm seeing things that were related to, to RVs.
Yeah.
Because, you know, when this was first approached, retail sales have changed dramatically.
Right.
Since twenty nineteen. Um, so, I agree with them that, that reducing the amount of retail space is not a bad idea. I mean, it's not negative. You know, you talk about that if we go forward for, one of the things you're talking about, that berm that, you know, people will park along there.
Yeah.
Couldn't we put up some no parking signs there and that would let the police to, to, um, then remove people from there?
We could make that a condition of approval.
Yeah, because I just think in that one area, you can't just say, oh, because people are doing things illegally that it should, the, the, the applicant should have to.
It's very challenging to enforce, um, out there because you have to have some sign that says, you know, it's either this is private property or there's no parking. If you have no parking signs, then police can at least write tickets on cars that are parking. This would be on Caltrans right of way. So it's very challenging to enforce Caltrans's property trespassing restrictions.
Okay.
So the no parking would be one way that we could seek to have, have it regulated. And we would have to, we would require it as a condition of approval to put up no parking signage or explore whatever it is. We would need to do studies or what have you to put that kind of restriction. Yeah, along the highway. I think, I, I believe it's a no parking zone anyway, but it's not signed.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have your questions?
Yeah, I had a question.
One, one more, but I'll, I'll ask after.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, being that it's on the commercial highway zone, um, is there a percentage of, uh, of the lot that has to be designated for sales? I know it's about an acre.
No, and, and that's why we're here today because there isn't some empirical threshold. Because if they came in and said, here, staff, you know, you met criteria one, two, three, we would say, okay, we're, we're good. We recommend approval because it meets criteria one, two, three, but that's not what we have. We have a, a, a standard that comes to your body that the decision is, does it meet the intent of the commercial highway zone? Being that RV storage is not an allowed use, is there enough of, uh, retail, commercial component to make that finding? And this is the description again of the, of the highway zone. Office, retail service and tourist oriented businesses along the highway serving community, regional need under the development standards, ensuring harmony. And, and again, and that's also why it was important to go back to the original project. Because over time, it's, it's morphing and it's morphing. So if we're just looking at mod four and you thought, oh, well, we're, we're switching building in A, A and B, which, which is a small part of the overall picture. So we, we just wanted to make sure that you had all of the information before you to make a decision. We're not recommending one way or the other, but we're just, we just wanna make sure you have the, the total project considered in front of you. So that's why I took you to that history.
Anything else?
It's unusual to have quite a history like this when it's, hasn't, we, we don't, we're, you know, just starting construction. And to have had this many changes in five years or the original application was twenty eighteen, it's pretty unusual. But I, but mar, you know, markets change, capital markets change. Covid happens.
Say Covid happened, just a minor, minor change.
Things like that, yeah.
No, no, from.
Anything else?
Okay.
Um, on the, on a traffic study, how long do those take typically, start to finish?
It, it could take thirty days to have it done. For an app, for a, a consultant, I, maybe I'd get, I'd say maybe a little longer than that because they'd have to go through all the contracting and maybe sixty, ninety days. And it would go through a thirty day review to see if it's complete and then from there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Was there a reason why the applicant went away from the restaurant aspect?
I don't know the reason. I, I'm imagining it's just difficult to find vendors, difficult to find tenants is probably what, what's happened. You know, so, but again, that was part of the consideration to approve for RV storage.
Anything else?
Yeah, actually I have one more question.
Yeah.
When does the time end for, uh, mod three? Is there an ending time or as long as construction continues?
It's, yeah, that's tricky be, one, because they achieved what's called commencement of construction under the deadline of that. And that was in twenty, July of twenty-three. So the focus was on getting, building, seize building plans approved without any of the other building plans approved. And just going to construction there in order to get a, uh, inspection to say, we commenced construction. And so then that prevented the expiration of the entitlement while they were sorting out what the uses and buildings are going to be going forward. But, you know, when markets change or uses change, existing conditions change. What hasn't changed is the, is the law. What hasn't changed is the general plan policy or the zoning policy. No one's come in to change the commercial highway zone to not have retail. And so staff is obligated to comply with the code as it exists today. We don't get to pick and choose, hey, the market's changing, the market's changing. These are long-term visions for the city that we uphold.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I don't see any questions.
Okay. And I'm sure the applicant will elaborate a lot more on what, what kinds of uses is anticipated. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay. You ready?
Ready. Good evening, planning commission chair. My name's Don Duncan and I'm the owner of the property and, uh, of the development. And, uh, you asked a lot of good questions. A lot of them are historical and a lot of them, Brian, didn't have the answers to. I have the answers to all those. I can give you the history if you want the history and I'm happy to do so. But, but before we, before we go there, I wanna tell you why we're here tonight. We're here tonight, uh, we have an approved project. The project calls for RV storage on the back half of the property. It call, calls for RV sales and service on the front half of the property. Now, there have been changes and I can speak to all the changes and, and give you great reasons why the changes have happened. But tonight, in this meeting, we're talking about two buildings, building A and building B, we call them. And before I talk to you about building A and B, I wanna talk to you about this very beginning of the project when the property looked like this. So for those of you that don't know, I have a storage lot, a twelve acre facility I built from the ground up in Simi Valley. That's arguably the nicest RV storage lot within two hundred miles of the lot. I also have for the lot, more than a decade, a small lot on the corner of A Street and Good Enough in Fillmore. After I, uh, moved up to this area and built the lot in Simi and came over to Fillmore, I kinda fell in love with the community. And I have this lot up there on A Street and Good Enough, but it's two, uh, two and three quarters acres and I don't own the property. So for years, I would come to the, down to the city and talk to Kevin McSweeney and say, find me a piece of property in the city where I can build a bigger storage lot. Every city has a problem with RV storage. And here, it's not only RVs, it's the big trucks that haul fruit and things like that. But for the last eight years, every RV storage lot between San Diego and Santa Barbara has been full. Every single one. Now, if you wanna go out to Lancaster, it's a different story. But if you wanna be in this coastline corridor as far east as, say Pasadena, there's no available storage ever. You have to get in line. It's so bad that I don't even keep a waiting list because at the end of one week, I can have fifty people on the list. And then when I have an open space, one space, and I start calling people, they don't answer the phone. You're trying to, you know, you're trying to honor the people that called you first. It's impossible. So we don't even keep waiting lists in the business. That's why you've seen so many RV storage lots open up along this corridor, uh, in, from Santa Paula to Santa Clarita. There's just a desperate need for storage. So when Kevin McSweeney called me and said, go look at this piece of property, uh, I think that might work for what you wanna do. And I went and looked at it and on the very west side, Chevron had two and three quarters acres with a sign, it was for sale. The other seven acres was owned by a farmer, Jim Finch, and it was not for sale. So I called Jim and I said, hey, I'm, I, I'm interested in purchasing this property. Would you be interested in selling it to me? Long story made short, he said yes. So I bought the property from Jim Finch and I bought the property from Chevron. And the reason the city was entertaining this is there's issues with that property. They weren't sure what to do there. There's contaminated water. There's wells that have to be checked. And I don't know what all the issues are, but to me, it looked like a great opportunity, alright? So along with that opportunity for storage came, uh, the requirement for retail. So I said, no problem. I know what exactly what to do there. I already sell used RVs and service RVs and store RVs in Simi Valley. It's a great business model and I'll bring that business model over here to Fillmore. The difference will be, I work outside on my twelve acre lot in Simi Valley. So every day we have to wrap up everything we're doing on service. We service RVs every day. But at the end of the day, we gotta wrap everything up because we can't roll down the doors and, and leave it exposed. So here, we designed a three bay building, uh, doors, roll up doors on both sides so you can drive through for service work. And then we needed a stick built building for, uh, offices. We wanted to be, have the opportunity to put RVs inside for maybe hot days in the summer where people don't wanna be on the lot or it's raining if people wanna come. It's just nice to have an, an indoor operation. And so I said, this is what we'll do. We'll sell RVs, we'll service RVs and we will also sell RV parts. Okay? Because everybody has an RV, has problems, little things going on all the time that, that you need to buy parts for. So that's from day one, that's what we were gonna do. Now, I will go back and give you a little history, alright? Originally, I had a partner and we were fifty fifty partners. And I don't know how to say this politely, but this guy had more money than God, okay? So when we got to designing the original property and I said, we need this building and we need this service building, and Kevin and Brian can attest to this, he said, what about doing more? Okay, so we took building A, flip flopped it and built building B. Identical pretty much inside. They're big open spaces. We can do whatever we want in the building, right? We had all kinds of the ideas. We had a lot of indoor storage too. We were gonna put indoor storage garages for these guys that are buying these boats. Uh, wakeboard boats that are a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. I thought we could store those on the lot. We had about five garages for gigantic million dollar pre-vosed RVs. Not a lot of them around, but we thought we would build that too. Well, times change, right? And after about four years of doing this, uh, somewhere around twenty twenty, just before Covid, my partner with all the money, and he was the lead, he was a developer and a contractor, he died of cancer unexpectedly. Nobody knew he died like that. So, right after he died, Covid hit and, and the city was closed, the world was closed. Nothing happened for about a year. When I came back after Covid, sat down with Dave Rollins and, and the planning department, I said, guys, I wanna revive this project. I've got a, I've got a lot of money invested here. I'm, I'm not the big hitter my partner was, but I can make this happen. But I don't need all these buildings. And by the way, in two thousand seventeen, the cost to build the entire project was eight and a half million dollars. With all those buildings, there was seven of them, okay? Today, the cost is about fourteen million dollars with three buildings. So costs went through the roof. So I went back and I said, I'm gonna build this project. I'm gonna do RV sales, but I only need one building. I'm gonna do RV service, but I only need one service building. And I'm gonna do RV storage and I'm gonna sell RV parts for retail, but I wanna do more. I, I wanna add retail as soon as I can figure out what that retail should be. So everybody that has an RV, uh, sales lot right now, and I, you name them, I could tell you about them, that has a retail store, typically about fifteen hundred square feet for selling RV parts, they all wish they didn't have it. Times have changed. Raise your hands if you've bought anything from Amazon lately. Anybody? Huh? No hands going up yet? Everybody bought from Amazon, right? How quick do you get it? Day or two? Alright, that's what we do now. So when you need an RV part, you might go to the RV store and look in their retail store and look at, and get the part number. And then you go home and you order it on Amazon. That's what's happening. So everybody that's got fifteen hundred square feet earmarked for showing parts and wishes they didn't have it. We're still gonna sell the parts. We're just not gonna dedicate that much space to it. There's thirty-five thousand cars a day going down Highway one twenty-six. And a lot of them are RVs. Everybody in Santa Clarita and Valencia is going to the beach. And everybody over here in the, in the winter is going to the desert. It's the. It's the perfect place for what we're going to do. And those people are going to get about halfway to where they're going and say, "We need a dump hose," or we, you know, there's certain things in the RV world that they're going to need and we're going to have them, okay? But that's not where the money's made. The money's made in selling RVs. That's where the tax money's going to help the city. But we're going to, we're delivering on every promise we initially had. It's just changed over the last eight years. Okay? But I, it was Kevin that got me started. He said, "This is a piece of property that we think will work for what you want to do." And he's right. It will. It's perfect. And this business model, by the way, nobody else does it. If you go to Camping World, they sell RVs and they sell, and they service RVs. I mean, I don't know if anybody in here has an RV, but if you do, you know this stuff, right? Nobody does sales, service, and storage, nobody. So in Fillmore, like if you look at the one they put in Santa Paula, everybody familiar with the RV store in Santa Paula and the old Ford dealership? If you buy an RV there, you better, based on what I told you earlier, you better have a place to park it. Because don't buy the RV and then start making phone calls for where you're going to store it because you won't find a space. You could be waiting a couple of months. Not here, okay? It will be like that once we fill up, okay? But there's a couple of spaces every month. But if you buy an RV here, we're going to have a home for it, which is, that business model doesn't exist except for, you know, I don't know anybody else doing it. It's a great business model, sales, service, and storage. Okay, so that's how we started. Let's get back to those buildings. All right. This is why we're here tonight. So the building in green is what we call Building B. Just flip-flopped, if you look, is Building A to the east side. All right. Now, originally, those buildings were about 3,800 square feet. Brian talked about the buildings getting smaller. Yeah, they ramped up to over 5,000 and then they ramped down to around 5,000, okay? But originally, they were much smaller. But when we decided to get rid of some of the other buildings, they expanded a little bit. The reason we're here tonight is that we have a project approved to build the service building, which is the pink building. It's already built. We have approval to build Building A, the one that's not green. And we could do that. But if we do that, it's going to stop us from adding additional retail, which we want to add. So what, there's lots of opportunities for retail. One of the ones that we're most interested in right now is a car wash, okay? I promise you a car wash. I'm telling you, that's what we're most interested in. We think it works in Fillmore, we've done a lot of due diligence. We think we need a car wash in Fillmore and we think it would fit nicely on this property. So with that said, we decided that we should move the sales operation from right inside the gate, because that's where the entrance is, right there, and move it down by the service building to free up that location for additional retail. Now, do we know exactly what it's going to be? No, we have ideas, we've done a lot of work. We have, we have interest in doing a couple of different things. But the reason we're here tonight is we want to move the sales. It's all the offices for the whole lot, for the backside, for the front side. It's showroom if we want it. It's a huge open space. So if we want to pull as many as four RVs in there, we could. Or we can put two. It's wide open, we can do a retail section, we can do whatever we want inside that building. The key is, what do we want, right? And right now, it's all RV-focused. But as we see opportunities for additional retail, we want them on the lot. We fully intend to develop something right inside the entrance in Location A. And I think everybody knows what location that is. But we're not going to build something there until we know it's going to be successful. So we have, we have ideas that we're exploring. But that's why we're here tonight. We want to flip-flop those buildings. Everything that can be done in Building A can be done in Building B. Everything in Building B can be done in Building A. There was a rumor started, don't know by who or when or why. It was started about four years ago that Don Duncan is going to build an RV storage lot and he's not going to sell RVs on the lot. I don't know how anybody could believe that after seeing signs out there for five years that say, "Highway 126, sales, service, storage." I mean, it's been from day one. It's commercial property. You have to have a commercial operation. You have to have retail sales. We have it. Those tall doors in that building are not for tall people. Those tall buildings are for driving RVs in and putting them inside the building. So when I designed a building, two of them initially, okay, with 16-foot roll-up doors, eight of them, if I wasn't going to put RVs in that building and sell RVs, no, I wouldn't. So it, to me, it doesn't, you know, I don't know how we ever got off track like that, but we did. This was the design of the service building. It's got roll-up doors on both sides so you can drive right through the building. There's three doors and they're all designed for service inside. Where you see the RV on the right on the outside, that's a wash bay. So everybody that stores their RV before they use it, they want to get it washed. To wash an RV properly, you got to start on the roof. But you can't have customers up on the roof with a high-pressure hose cleaning off their RVs. So we have to do it for them. And that's what you're looking at there. And there's a bigger blow-up picture of it. And that's the actual building. So it's, you know, you live in Fillmore, you've driven by, you've seen it, that's what's happening there. We're going to service RVs. Now, maybe some of you don't know, Brian mentioned the other day, he didn't know what service in RVs meant. And he said, "I've gotten a lot of questions from people on that and I don't know what to tell them." Well, I can tell you what it means. All right. Most people that have RVs, let's put travel trailers aside right now, let's just talk about the motorized ones. The average person drives their motor home 3,000 miles a year. You think they have engine problems? Not for 30 years, okay? Do you think they have transmission problems? No, they don't. The issues with RVs are the step motor, the water pump, everything on the roof that the sun's beating down on, the vent covers need to be replaced, new caulking. That's RV service work. It's servicing the house side of the RV and that's what we'll do. I've been doing it for 14 years in Simi Valley. I'm going to close that operation down and move it to Fillmore when this, when we're in business here. Because I don't have a, like I said, out there, I was there today working on RVs and we do everything outside. Here, we'll do everything inside. I'll tell you something else about RV service. If you were to go buy an RV, is anybody here have an RV? You do, okay.
I did, for years.
Okay, well, if you buy an RV down where all the RV guys are in Orange County and come back to Ventura and have a problem with it, none of the dealers up here will let you come to their lot and service your RV. They tell you, "Go back to where you bought it." So dealers don't want service business. They don't want it. So who's doing service work on RVs? It's all the automotive shops that want the business because it's more profitable than working on cars. The hourly rate is higher. But you know what it's like? You know what automotive dealers? Just take a look at the guy on the corner of A Street. You can't even pull a car on his lot. You know what I'm talking about? At the corner of A and 126? You can't even get a car on there. So when an RV guy has to take his RV to an automotive place for service, it's the worst day of his life, especially if he's pulling a 40-foot fifth wheel, there's no parking, all right? So as, you know, what we're going to do here, we have 12 acres, easy access, and we're going to service all the RVs that nobody else wants to service. I've been doing it for 10 years.
Don, can I interrupt for one second? Would you mind speaking into the microphone and not walking away from it? We're recording it, so it helps us for minutes. Everything's, continue what you're doing, it's fine.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay. So I just want to go over this quickly. These buildings, when we first sat in the room and talked about building two instead of one, all we did is flip-flop them. I know this one says retail and the other one doesn't, but it's just because it's, we didn't write retail on the page. They're identical. We can do everything that we can do in one building in the other. So we intend to do that. This is A. So it has roll-up doors as well. You see the showroom area on the left side and it says retail in the middle, but that could be RV showroom if we wanted. So here's Building B. It's the same thing. We have the showroom on the right and we have that big open space on the left. And they're no different, those two buildings. Never were intended to be any different. They were, whatever works is what we're going to put in there. We're not going to open up a retail shop that's not going to make money. We're going to open, we're going to sell stuff, but we're not going to dedicate floor space if we don't need to. We'd rather, we're going to use it in the best possible way. And you don't always know what that is upfront, guys. Sometimes you got to open for business and figure out what works. You know, sometimes it makes sense to, maybe in the summer, we have four RVs in there and the winter, we do something different. But that's something we figure out on the fly. All right. I just threw this into the presentation, this is our fictitious business name. So it's RV sales and service. So is there anybody in the room that still doesn't think, oh, sorry. Is there anybody in the room that still doesn't think I'm going to open up a sales lot? Because if there is, I'd like to make sure that I address that right now. Okay? I'm not going to address this slide, Scott is going to address that later, but it has to do with the RVs parking out front. All right. So this is before my partner died and this is before COVID. This is when we thought we were opening. Proudly put that sign up there myself, all right? And it says, "Sales, service, and storage." That's when we thought we were going to open for business. Didn't happen. Then I changed the sign. Thought we were going to open in 2023. Just want to tell something to the planning department, I mean, to the Planning Commission, just so you know. So when you're developing, and I'm not a developer, I'm just a guy that has an RV storage lot that wanted another one, not a developer. I'm learning on the fly. But when you go and somebody tells you, like in a city, "Okay, you've got a year to get something done," don't fall, don't fall for it. Nothing happens in a year. Nothing. It takes Caltrans and Edison a year to do anything, okay? Sometimes longer. You can't get, it's not, it's not that you're trying to move slowly. There's agencies out there that don't move fast. So for example, Edison and all the fires we had, when I called them, and I'm going to show you the pole here in a second, but we have, we have, the property floor dropped about five feet and we have a utility pole out there that needs to be made longer now over a year. It's now supposed to be changed out in the next six weeks. I don't know, year and a half, two years? I mean, it's crazy. Like, who would, who would think that it takes that long to make something happen? So when you guys are, and even the planning department, when you're talking about approving projects and giving people periods of times and why the extensions, well, this is why. Because you can't make things happen. You can't, there's no way of forcing it. The railroad behind our property, there's two big, you'll see them here in a second, there's two big, about three-to-four-foot diameter pipes that somebody a long time ago put underneath the railroad tracks that are pointing down on my property. Well, in the last two years, when we got a lot of rain, water came out of those pipes for four months. Stops everything. You can't work. Because the water, if you dig trenches to do undergrounding, the water fills, you just can't, you stop, you can't do anything. After that building got built, if you lived, everybody in Fillmore, you saw that building and then you saw nothing for like six months, we're waiting for that water to start, stop coming out of those pipes. Or for the railroad to give us approval and permits to build a wall and a V-ditch so we could hold that water back and start our project. It's crazy. Until you've experienced it, guys, you have no idea what it's like trying to finish a project like this. And there's nothing you can do about it, except for wait. There's one of them. All right? Those things drip for three to four months. Not dripped, I mean, there's, there's water coming out a lot stronger than that right after the rains. This slide's just to show you, you guys are in Fillmore, you know, we're in development now, we've done a tremendous amount of work in the last couple of months with undergrounding and stormwater drains and, you know, everything that goes underground. We built a, about a 800-foot-long retaining wall up against railroad and that's the famous pole that needs to be made longer, that's taken a year and a half, two years to get Edison out there to do it. The whole reason for me being here tonight is that I want to add, I want more on this lot. It's a big lot. I want more retail. I want to put something, and I don't know what yet, I'm leaning towards a car wash, but I don't know what yet. So if somebody can come in and go right to it and get, the reason I like the car wash and the ones I'm talking about are the, like, subscription where you come in, drive through and go home, not where there's a bunch of guys out drying. So you come in, you go around, you go through that tunnel and you go back and you're gone. What I, what, if I, if we don't approve this and I build Building A, there won't be any additional retail. Because I'm not going to have people drive through Building A where I have my sales offices and retail and showroom and then buy, and drive and buy RVs to get over by my service building to wash their car or do whatever. It doesn't make any sense. So I sat down with Kevin, I sat down with Dave Rollins, I sat down with Brian, said, "Guys, we got to, we got to change this. It doesn't make any sense to do it that way. I can't add retail. If we put that building over here, now I've got sales and service close together, I've got everything and we have an opportunity to add more." Because when you have a big lot like that, you want more. You've just got to figure out what more is. You know, it's not always simple, all right? If anybody has any questions that you asked Brian, like you asked about the signal and you asked about the utility poles and, I mean, I have answers to all of that stuff, okay? I know the answers to all of it and I'd be happy to answer if anybody's not satisfied with the answers they've got yet. And I think that's about.
Do you want to take questions out, Don, then?
I would love to.
Okay, do you have any questions? Cameron? The only question that I have, it's, and I understand that moving it over would be great, but if we go through the mod four, then it sounds like to me it opens up the whole project to new conditions. And that just seems to me it's going to be a problem for you. Because if they start.
Well, you know, everybody's got an opinion, right? My opinion's a lot different than how I would have liked to have seen this happen versus how it's happened, or two different things. We have an approved project. We can build Building A, right? We can do it, we can go put Building A. But that's it then, we're done. There's not going to be any more, I'm not going to build more retail in the middle between my sale, in the middle of my sales lot and my service. I got to move it over and have the opportunity for more retail.
I know, I, I feel agree that, I mean, being the retail business, you want the most access from coming right in.
Right. Right, so, I mean, that's up to, I guess that's up to y'all. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, this could have been, you know, a simple, simple thing. We're revisiting history, we're talking about things that have already been solved. And there's reasons for all of it. There's reasons why the project has morphed.
Yeah.
Right? I've given you some of them, but there's good reasons.
Well, you mean, we've gone through a lot of things. Your partner died, COVID, there's been a lot of changes.
Costs, the retail landscape. There's, the world's changed in eight years. Dramatically. Look at all the, look at the, all the commercial, just look at Fillmore. Look at, look at, look at the commercial obstacles that you face in Fillmore. I mean, it's changed. Look at, look at the office buildings that were vacant for years. I mean, we've, we've lived through some changes. So when you're putting a project together like this, which for me, I got it all on the line, okay? I'm a small timer. I got a storage lot in Simi Valley. I'm not, I'm not the guys that are building homes across the street. I'm one of you guys, right? I'm just trying to build a storage lot and I got to, you can only spend so much money. You know, I'm spending almost. You know, I'm spending almost three times more than I initially thought I was going to spend. I know the numbers. I, I'm in this business now. I know what works. I won't make money on that lot for a decade. I'll survive, but for a decade, it, it's not going to be a moneymaker. I'm doing this for the long haul, I'm building this for my children. I'm, I'm building this lot, my son's going to run it with me, and it's going to be a family business, and we're going to employ people that live in Fillmore. Like I told you, I've fallen in love with Fillmore, I, I think it's a, a great town. And, and I, I don't know, it's just, it's special to me. I've had that lot in, on A Street for ten years. When I originally started that lot, the fences are this high. Okay? Anybody can hop over that fence. I've got a lot in Simi Valley on twelve acres with medium security prism fencing. Okay? I got more cameras than you could shake a stick at, which were a waste of money, by the way. And I thought, when I opened up this Fillmore lot, I'm going to have a real problem over here. People are going to be jumping over the lot, vandalizing the RVs. In, in, over a decade, you know how many times I've had a problem on my Fillmore lot? Anyone want to guess? Not one. Not one. At the same time, on my high security lot in Simi Valley, I've had Cadillac converters stolen. I've had guys, you know, breaking windows in RVs. The, the people that live in the canyons over there, they just throw rocks every now and then just to make themselves happy. And I, and I've never had one incident on my Fillmore lot. And that makes me feel good about Fillmore. You know, it just does. And it's little things like that.
Okay, so did you say someone else was going to make more presentation?
Well, Scott's got some things to talk about that are, Scott is the civil engineer and general contractor.
Hi, good evening. Um, Scott Yules, I'm with the land engineering civil engineer, as Don said. Um, I just want to answer a few of the questions that came up. Um, we'll keep it quick. Um, specifically related to the traffic study. Uh, we've done three traffic studies. Um, we've, we identified the A through J that Brian talked about. And a signal was not warranted. And, and part of what, um, we are hoping is if we get a use in the location of building A that does generate more traffic, it does give us an opportunity to go back, um, to Caltrans with the new traffic study with new trip generation. And it may, it may trigger a signal at that time. But under the existing condition, whether we build in building location A or whether we build in building location B, the traffic signal's not warranted based on the project that we have. And then Don pointed out that, uh, we believe that, that retail sales does satisfy the sales in terms of meeting the requirements for the CH, commercial zone. Um, there will be other retail sales of parts, but selling retails, or selling, um, RVs is retail sales. Um, and so if we build building B, the intent would be to sell all of the things that we would sell in building B and building A. Um, but, uh, having the opportunity for something else in A does give us an opportunity to possibly get a signal there through Caltrans. Um, and the other item that I wanted to bring up was the, the cross section. Uh, the cross section along Highway one twenty-six. So if you're looking at your monitor, on the left-hand side is the project, on the right-hand side is Highway one twenty-six, up to the center line. There's a, um, uh, Caltrans right-of-way that's called out. And then there's a fourteen-foot dedication that we are dedicating to the, to the city for sidewalk and the drainage area, and that's for future one twenty-six widening. It's been requested from other projects, um, along one twenty-six. That's the area that Brian's talking about where we have, um, we have a dirt shoulder that's part of Caltrans right-of-way. And then we have a swale that would be within the city right-of-way. Um, and then you can see that, that's the eight-foot section, and then we have a six-foot sidewalk. So we could, um, very easily, within the city's right-of-way, um, and land that would be dedicated to the city, provide no parking signage there. Between the Caltrans right-of-way and where our sidewalk is, if that's something that, uh, the planning commission desires to help, at least give an opportunity to, to enforce, um, no parking if the, if that becomes an issue in this area. Uh, that's, uh, that's the only items that I had in terms of answering questions unless there's other questions that the commission has.
Scott, I might want to mention too, one of you brought it up. Somebody brought up about, uh, traffic and left, it's right turn in, right turn out only. There's nobody turning, going, there's nobody going, uh, east and turning into the lot per Caltrans, uh, you know, recommendation or.
It's actually a requirement of our Caltrans encroachment permit.
And you'll have signage that says right turn only.
Signage for right in, right out only.
Because that's really dangerous, and I don't, I don't want to see anyone lose their life.
Yeah.
Trying to make a left turn there.
Exactly.
Um, I do have one question for you.
Mm-hmm.
That's all right?
Yes.
Okay, um, it's nothing that you've actually brought up, uh, but since you're here, you're the civil engineer.
Yeah.
Uh, I was going to ask about on the, um, north side of the property with your retaining wall, and you had talked about the pipes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so you've engineered the drainage so that, because you said the drainage comes right across the property. So, um, you've engineered the wall and the drainage so that it's going to, uh, be an engineered solution to, to not go through your property and not flood anyone else's property.
Exactly. So if you see, um, kind of on the left-hand side at the top, you'll see a little line here where the cursor is. There's one culvert that comes across the railroad at this location. And then over here on the right-hand side, right under the word "commission," there's another culvert that crosses the railroad. Um, we're, those are currently discharging into, and just directly into the dirt. They're causing significant erosion, um, to the tune of maybe ten feet adjacent to the railroad tracks. And so as part of this project, we're, um, providing a concrete swale that goes all the way to where those culverts discharge. And then that, um, that concrete swale runs along the northern property line, all the way to the corner of the property, and then runs down our eastern property line. It discharges into, um, riprap and then goes into a Caltrans box culvert that's right there that crosses under one twenty-six. So that's where all this water goes to today. It's just it runs, um, it runs directly across the site. It runs along Highway one twenty-six and then ultimately gets down to this location. So that's going to be all captured in a, in a swale. And we have, um, we have a license agreement with VCTC, which requires the annual maintenance of, um, these facilities for them.
Any other question? We go?
A quick question. Mr. Duncan mentioned that there was some contaminated water wells on the site.
Uh, so this, uh, it's hard to see, there's a, there's a dash line kind of across the site. So this left side of the site was owned by Chevron. And there was some contamination there, and there's some monitoring wells there that they're required to monitor. I don't know the exact terms and the duration, um, but that's, um, uh, that was the, the, some of the issues with the site, especially on this, uh, west side. And then on the east side of the property, there's a fault that comes down through there. And if you, if you look at this area, you can actually see where there's been a slide within the hillside, um, where some of the, some of the dirt has piled up. And, and you can see we've kind of notched the corner of our site. That's specific to, uh, the fault and the, um, the historic slide that's been in that area, staying, staying out of that and staying away from that area.
Is that contaminated area, um, I guess, need to be monitored for the life of the project or life of the property?
So we're, we're paving over the majority of the site, but we are maintaining the groundwater monitoring and sampling well.
Is DTSC overseeing this?
I don't know that.
Do you know, Don?
Back to the mic.
Yeah.
Here's what I believe I know. I think it, it was like ten to fifteen years they had to monitor it.
Okay.
And they've been doing it, I think they only come out once a year to monitor those wells. And, uh, so it's not for life, it's for a period of time until, I guess it's cleaned up. And I think that was determined to be about ten or fifteen years, I can't remember which one.
Okay. Thank you.
One of them is, you know where the little park is? So one of the wells is, let me see here, right? There, right, right about there, there's a well. And there's another one like right in this area. There's two.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, do we have some discussion?
Michael, before getting into discussion, see if there's any public comment. Open for public comment period. There, there may not be, but.
Okay, do we have any, um?
Excuse me, can you come to the podium and introduce yourself and?
My name is Brian Stull, and I represent the properties that are immediately adjacent to this property that's being discussed today. There's two things that I wanted to make sure that were clarified before anything else happened. Part of the properties that I represent are leased, and I need to have access to those locations. That's one concern. The other concern is zoning. I would like to eventually sell this property at some point, hopefully to Don, but I'd like to be able to sell the property, and I want to make sure that I'm not going to run into zoning issues as a result of that. Or that would prevent that from occurring, because I'm not interested in retail in Fillmore. Sorry, I'm a farmer in Fresno. So I want to clarify those two things, and this may not be the, the forum to do that in. I just wanted to make sure that both of those points were addressed, mostly because I'm concerned about the access to the property itself down at the far end there where, where I have property that's leased. And they need to be able to access the property. Thank you very much, folks.
Okay, no other, um, comments? No cards? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing? Okay. We're not taking a vote on anything, right? Because there's no... Just a recommendation?
Correct. The procedural place where the planning commission is at is basically to provide staff direction on the next step to take in terms of whether the modification's conceptually acceptable or not. And then there's also, um, it, it's on page five of the planning commission. But ultimately, the planning commission would sort of be giving a consensus direction to staff, and then staff would return with resolutions or revised conditions of approval based on the planning commission's direction.
You're not a recommending body. You're the final decision maker on this project. We're asking for direction on the issues tonight. Give us direction, and we can wrap it up in a nice bow for you next time, but you are the final decision makers. You don't make a recommendation to the city council.
No, I'm not saying make a recommendation, I'm just saying recommendations to staff to move forward.
And in some cases, if you can make a decision tonight on things, that'd be great.
But just to be clear though, it's not, there's not a resolution, or the, the planning commission's not being asked to approve modification number four to deny. It's basically providing staff direction, which way to go, and then the staff would return with the more finalized item.
Okay. So... So if we're not taking a vote on anything, right?
It's, it's not, I mean.
We can take a vote on it, but it's not a resolution.
Correct. It's basically, it's sort of reaching a consent on the direction to give to staff.
So it looks like we have to move forward with modification four, or denying modification four.
That's, that would be, that's the overall direction to give to staff. And then based on that direction, staff would return at a future meeting.
Okay, so let's go and have comments.
Yeah, I, I have some. Um, I think that, uh, the last traffic study that was done is probably outdated by the amount of traffic that's coming through the one twenty-six currently. So I think a new one should be done. Um, I think irrelevant to what we think about signs and traffic laws. I've seen plenty of cars pass in the center divider on the shoulders on the one twenty-six going to and from Santa Clarita and to Santa Paula. Um, I just think something should be updated so we actually know what the potential outcome could be, because there's a lot of homes being built in Santa Clarita, Santa Paula, Piru, and the amount of traffic coming through here is phenomenal. Especially going into late spring, early summer, a lot of people travel it. Um, we can put up a sign that says left turn only, but that could be four rights, for all we know. So I think that that's one thing that we need to really focus on is what the, the new, or updated traffic study states. And that's, that's all that I have for now.
Cameron?
A couple of things. Um, I, I, I'm open to the idea of flopping location. I think hearing, understanding of the reason behind why and intention down the road of adding future retail. From a logistics standpoint, it makes sense, I, I get it. Um, I guess my question is, is, can, can we require a condition of approval for future retail in that location? Or is that something that can happen? Can, can you do? This may be a question for staff.
Michael, can you correct me? But if, if you're thinking is... Because how do we make a finding out of the commercial highway zone? Can the applicant have more than a promise? Can he put on a plan today, car wash? Or something else? It was, it was their proposal to have building A where it is today, and the configuration that it is today. So we're, we're coming with what they originally, what they approved in mod one. So why it would go to where B is or, or have, is not clear as to why that switch is happening. Because we know there's RV sales, I think Don asked around, does anybody believe there, anybody believe there's not RV sales? Nobody, nobody doubts that whatsoever. The question is, what's changed? Is, is there, was there supposed to be more than RV sales to make that finding? And he says there is going to be retail coming forward. Can he, can, if there's something that can go on the plan today, I think, is that your question?
Yeah, my question would be, is there any way we could, I currently, it notes as optional. So I, I agree with staff that when I hear optional, that, that pretty much, uh, means it probably won't happen. Not, not saying it won't, but that, that's how it's viewed. Is there any way we can dedicate an area on the plans as future? And can we require it in a condition of approval for future retail or?
Yeah, I mean, it would, from a, from a traffic study standpoint, when you're doing entitlement, you, you typically know what you start going there. For example, a car wash would have a different traffic generation analysis under the traffic manual, the ITE manual, than would, um, the RV part sales, which is going to have trip capture. So we don't know yet whether something proposed in the future is going to be consistent with the entitlements today or not.
I, I guess my position of where I'm coming from is that, that area that's zoned is, is really the, the luxury of having that RV storage is, and getting away with it in that zoning area would be because there's some sort of retail aspect. And RV sales is considered, I guess, sales or retail, um, and, and can be defined that way. I, I think when the applicant, and I know there's a lot of historical changes that happened since the, the beginning of this, but I think it was sold probably to the city and to the planning commissions. Maybe a little more retail, robust, and not just, it feels really RV-heavy right now. And we have a lot of RV storage here in the city of Fillmore. Um, and, and what I, what I, what I'm looking for is a way to guarantee we're going to get more than just RV sales and RV storage. And, and, you know, I, I love the car wash idea, I think the city would benefit from that. But I, I just a way of how, how we could do that.
The public hearing's been closed, so if you could wait for the, thank you.
To piggyback off of, uh, what you said, Commissioner, I, I agree. Just getting on paper would be great, um, because then it's just not a promise, or it's not just optional. It's a way to move forward to say, yeah, I agree, this will bring, this is retail and this will bring more. I guess it doesn't matter what it is, it could be a car wash, which I also felt that it's a good idea. But leaving it as optional or leaving it as vacant is where, um, it's undetermined. Could stay vacant for ten, fifteen years.
So regarding modification number four.
So regarding modification number four and the swapping of the buildings A and B, listening to the applicant, I understand his reasoning, and I support that. And I think as a concession, I would like to see building A, I'd like to see optional struck, and make it like... I don't know if "future" is the right word for it, but to make sure that... I would... I like your car wash idea, but I would like to have some assurances that it's coming and not optional. Optional means you have the option of not doing it. I would like to see some assurances that it does happen. So I would like... I'm supportive of moving forward with modification four, swapping the buildings, but have an assurance that that building A in the future will be used as retail, not optional, but will be there. In regards to the frontage along Highway 126, I would like to see city staff continue to work with the applicant to try to come up with a solution to not have bare dirt there, which would, in my opinion, I think that's going to attract truck drivers to park their trucks there, or other people to park there, and just... I know we've had issues with truck parking in the city of Fillmore before. I don't want to see us invite... I don't know if that's the right word, but open up another area where trucks feel like they have free access to just park and, you know, continue the issue, the problems that we've seen other areas. So I don't know if that's signage. I don't know if that's more landscaping. One of the issues is... Or one of the items on here is the approved project has 7.2% landscaping, or you were saying, Brian, maybe up to like 8%. I'd like to see us... I know it's an approved project, but I'd like to see maybe try to get a little bit closer to that 12%, which is part, which is in our current standards. That's... We have standards for a reason, and if we're going to open it up with modification four, then if we're not just looking at that one piece of it, again, it opens up the whole project. So I'd like to see us try to make some headway into a little bit more landscape to try to get closer to that standard that's in our city standards right now. I think that's my comments right now.
I wanted to ask. I know I was here probably right after the project started, but I've been for here most of the project. Remind me if I'm remembering that there was going to be access from the lot to the park? Am I a little lost, or did I understand that wrong back in five years ago? Okay, okay. I just remember the park being talked about, and I don't know if it was an access theme, or it was just like the park's in the state as is, not going to get modifications?
Yeah, I honestly don't remember.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Yeah?
Yeah, with the modification kind of opening the whole project up, I really want to see the utilities underground being that along the whole highway, commercial highway, they're being underground. That's something that I know it's huge, and I know why it was exchanged. I don't know if that's something that could be retouched and revisited, if this is going to be open. But I guess it's been approved already with the way it is, but it's definitely something I want to look at.
Okay. You could probably answer this. What would it cost to put the utilities underground? Brian, do you know?
No. We did an analysis that was presented several years ago now. I... It was several million dollars. I don't remember the exact figure, but it was... I think, yeah, I mean, it was close to three, I believe.
Okay. That's what I... That's what my thing would be, at least $2 million, $2.5 million. Okay. Okay. I would be for mod four, being able to flip the buildings. But the only thing I'm worried about, that all this other stuff's going to get opened up, and then it's going to push the project back further and further and further. So if we could limit to these four items, and I'd be fine with... I'd be fine with everything that's already in the thing, just flipping the buildings. But I seem I'm to the other extreme than some of the other people up here. So what... I'm looking for, what do we... What would be the recommendation? What's the recommendation to staff, then?
If you like, I can summarize it for you from what I heard, and you can tell me if it's correct.
Okay.
Number one, I saw consensus for an updated traffic study. Number two, you want some assurances for retail to occur. You want something from the applicant that that will happen. You want to see what that is. Number three, you want city staff to work with the designer on the Highway 126 frontage design. Number four, you want to see if we can increase landscaping, get closer to 12%. We can explore... The fifth one was utility, underground utility. We can explore that cost for you and present that to you. It's going to be for in excess of $3 million, because we're going to have to use current data. But it will most likely convince you that it not be undergrounded. But that's what I've heard, those five items.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment on the traffic study. If the intent of the traffic study was because of the signal, the... Or something onsite, that would be triggered by the onsite site and not based on the number of trips that's on 126. Or it wouldn't necessarily be a study of the corridor in terms of the traffic that's on 126. It would take a change of the project in terms of number of trips generated that would then help us trigger that warrant. So if we did a traffic study, other than updating existing conditions, it will be the same exact traffic study, because they'll use the same exact project data for number of trips in terms of what would get submitted to the city and Caltrans.
And with the traffic study that was already done, that was with buildings A, B, and C, correct?
That's correct, and it would still be with buildings A, B, and C.
Oh, so you wouldn't... Well, if we did a new one, and that building is then optional...
It was option... I mean, building B was optional, but the intent is that you don't go back for environmental reasons if we decided to build the optional building. So that's included in the traffic study.
Okay.
I've worked with the traffic study people three times, and then we wanted to do a fourth one. And the traffic study guy said, "I can't take your money to do another traffic study." I said, "Well, what can you?" He says, "I'll write a letter." He wrote a letter to Dave Rollins and said, "We can do traffic studies on this corridor. We've been doing them for 20 years. You're nowhere close to meeting the warrants." So the only way, and a traffic signal, even though it's costly, okay, it would be good for the business. But we're not going to get a traffic signal there unless we have more, unless we add, unless we have more happening, like across the street where Eldorado is, there's no change. The only thing to change it is if the stole property had some... So the stole property, which is to the east of ours, we all use the same driveway. That's Kevin. So to get onto his property, you'll enter through our entrance and then just turn right and go to his property. That's already settled, okay? So the only way we're ever going to get a traffic study there, traffic... Another traffic study's not going to change anything right now. It's going to have to be we bring in more cars onto 126 from the properties. And since Eldorado's not going to change, the only way to do it, like, is to generate more traffic from our lot, or from, in the future, from the stole lot. But I also want to point out to those of you that don't... I know you don't know, because you... How would you, all right? But I do know, because I have a lot in Sea Valley. On a... In a given day, okay? Now, Fridays can be a little different, okay, by two or three, maybe four of you. On a given day, there might be between zero and five RVs coming and going off the lot. They... There's not a lot happening. If you drive by RV storage lots, John's got, you know, across the street, not... And you can look at mine on the street. When you drive by a lot, what do you see? A bunch of parked RVs, because that's where they are most of the time. The average customer is taking an RV out sometime between zero and five times a year. That's average. So it's not like they're coming and going all the time. They just don't. So we have to figure out a way. The only thing that's ever going to put a signal there is going to be more people coming off the lot. And my lot's not going to generate that. Even with a car wash, I don't... From what I've been told about the... From the traffic study guys, you're not even close. So something is going to have to change in order for us to get a signal there.
And in order for a signal to be put there, it has to be approved by Caltrans?
Right.
And they're not going to approve a signal to slow something down if it's not the volume?
Yeah, we're not even close, okay? Is the way it was presented to me. You're not even close. And then I'm just telling you what they told me. Nothing's changing at Eldorado. They're not building new homes there, right? So that's not changing. And then you've got what you've got. So until something is bringing a lot more cars to the road, it has nothing to do with the people going up and down the 126.
Okay. All right, thanks, Tony.
I want to make sure you understand that, because it's hard to appreciate what they just said on Saturday at 11 o'clock when you're trying to get through Fillmore. We're at a level of service F, basically. Gridlocked from one end of the city to the other, and they just said you don't need a traffic study. It doesn't compute if you live in Fillmore and you hear that. But they're right. It's based on what they generate. Are they contributing to that traffic? And you just heard, basically, you know, one or two a day. I mean, you don't see 100 people pulling out an RV all at one time. But Aaron is also right with developments in Santa Clarita, Piru, Santa Paula. Regionally, Highway 126 is getting more and more traffic, and you feel it on those Saturdays. But is it the responsibility of the developer to satisfy that highway? And I just want to put it in those terms, because if you're listening to this tonight, you just heard the developer, "Hey, it's not needed," but you feel that traffic. It's just not what they're generating.
I know we're going to watch the tape later. I just want to make sure that we answer the question that was asked, which was, where do they make the U-turns, and do you need a left arrow? So we would have to go back... We'll pull up the traffic studies and see where in there it tells us where those U-turns were anticipated in the traffic study. Because if you're making right, right turn only, somewhere you're making a U-turn. So that... I think that was the... We'll go back to the traffic study and find that, and then we'll bring that back to you next time.
I know when I used to have an RV, I had it at John Meadows' place. We would go right into the RV, and we came... We'd go right, and then we'd go back through the bridges and come back through, because I would never want to make a left-hand turn.
So it'll track through the residential and come back to the highway that way?
And for the number of RVs that are taken out at a time, you're right. I mean, you have an RV, you buy it, and you think you're going to use it all the time, and you use it five times a year. So...
I'm out there all the time, and John's across the street with a new lot. I just want to say, if you guys live here...
You live here, you know, okay? And I don't think you're going to disagree with me. John, how many RVs you got leased over 100 there, right?
I'm out there all the time. I've never seen an RV pull off that lot, not one time when I'm here. And I'm here a lot. So it's... And I have the semi lot with 475 RVs on it. They just, you know, they... People do use them, but most of the time, they're sitting on the lot.
Okay, so just... Aaron, are you satisfied with not needing another traffic on it, or...
If the city... If the city can review the existing data, and if they feel that we should continue to request it, yes. But if the information that they currently have is sufficient, then I'm okay with that.
All right, thank you. Cameron, any comments?
No, I think my big sticking point is somehow, how do we require retail, future retail, or name that future retail?
Name it future rather than optional?
Option.
Okay.
It is really, you know, I think flipping it, that's...
Flipping it, to me, makes sense.
Yeah.
Because if you're going to go into a lot, you want to go to your retail there, and if you're going to go to RV sales, you're going to go past it. And if you want service, you're going to go past it. So I think it makes sense. I'm just worried that... I don't want to open a whole can of worms that we're back here six months from now because we have issues that we brought up and they can't fulfill.
I'm satisfied with Kevin's summary. Captured my comments.
Tim? I agree with both of you.
One more quick question, as far as it's no left turn out of that lot, correct? So is there anything that can be requested or asked of Caltrans to put those... I'm not sure what the terminology is. The... I've seen them yellow to prevent cars from making left turns onto the 126, being able to pull into the lot?
They're called delineators.
Delineators. Is there... Have those been... I didn't see anything about those in there. Maybe adding those onto the 126 to prevent... To help prevent the left turns, but allowing vehicles to turn left into the lot, but having the traffic flow or pattern turn right?
I guess without looking at the drawings, is it curved where you only could turn left? I mean, only turn right? Or is there a way you can turn left?
So just as a format, we should really reopen the public hearing, just so we're not interrupting the planning commission discussion.
Okay, we'll reopen the public hearing.
Thank you. We wouldn't have a problem with the delineators. I think the problem is that there's other facilities such as Eldorado that don't have the turning restrictions, and so adding turning restrictions, while wouldn't have an impact to us, would have a significant impact on the existing traffic flow of the Eldorado community, and the other businesses are right there. So while I don't think it would be a problem for us, I don't think it's a solution that would be good for the general area overall.
Well, what about if you came out of your lot, and you could... And you make... You curb it so they can only go right, but they can't make a left-hand turn?
We can't curb it, because there are RVs turning in, even making right-hand turns, and so it creates an issue of them running over the curbs. It requires a fairly large throat there. They are coming off of Highway 126, and so it would create an issue with circulation for us. It is striped that way, and it is signage... The signs require right turn only, leaving the site. And then one other item, there is a secondary access on the far west-hand side, but it's only for like fire, emergency vehicle access, yeah.
Oh, that's what it was. Yeah, thank you.
So you were...
Yeah, it just wasn't for humans, it's for vehicles. I thought it was going to be dogs and, you know, people walking.
You can walk your dogs while you pick up your RV?
No, while it was being, yeah, service or... That's what I kind of remembered, and I was like...
That was a good idea.
Yeah. It wasn't my idea, no. It was just talked about, and I was like, oh, that is a good idea.
Okay, so we need a motion?
I don't think... I think there's a consensus from the planning commission. Does staff feel like there's clear enough direction on the planning commission? I defer to staff whether the direction's clear enough.
It's loud and clear to us. Is it... And you're back to the crux of the matter, and the applicant will need to come back for assurances with retail. That's a very nut... Tough nut to crack for him, and he's been trying to do it for years. And we, as staff, wanted him to hear it from the planning commission, so that they can continue to build. He has an approved project, and so while he's building it, he can try to solve this issue with us.
So what would... Just to clarify, what would be something that would, from the applicant, that would satisfy that... Like, because Cameron said, you know, changing plans that says, you know, it's not optional, but it's future retail. What more would the applicant have to do?
You'd need to ask that question of yourselves. We would like direction from you. What is it that you would need? What assurance do you want?
I thought that's what basically what you said was to change the plans that says future retail.
Yeah, well, something that's pulling...
Yeah, but future is anything in the future, so there's no hard cap. For me, there's no hard cap, so that could be pushed on. That future could be, you know, passed along, passed along, passed along, and...
I think that there's a practical... What this issue get, there's sort of a practical challenge. You can write a condition, and... But even in structuring a condition... You can write a condition, and, but they're even in structuring a condition, how do you do that to really guarantee that there's a particular use? That's kind of what this issue gets at. So it's something, you know, revise conditions or something that.
It can sound like this. In a residential project, we say, "Before the 50th percentile house is sold, you must complete," and then you state the following, right? You craft something like that here, before something is constructed, the retail has to be installed. Or before, or the applicant must submit a bond of some type before you get too far in the retail. But you're looking for some type of assurance, other than just on paper that says in the, in the future, which is meaningless. You're looking for something a little bit more concrete than that, that puts leverage on the applicant.
Can I ask the applicant, applicant a question?
Yeah, sure.
I guess a quick question for you, Mr. Duncan. In your timeline, how much time do you need to figure out what that retail aspect looks like? Are we talking two years, five years, 15 years, 20 years? You know, just, just an idea of.
20 years, I'll be, so, I don't know the answer to that. Here, here's what I would tell you. I'm in here, I'm before you tonight, asking you to let me take a building that's approved and move it over 100 yards so that I can do something else where that building, that approved building is. Like, if I didn't want additional retail out there, what, then I don't, I don't need to be here right now, right? I can keep my, I have retail, I have sales, it's a longer walk to the service, I got lots of room for RVs. That's the best thing for the city, is selling RVs. That's where you're going to make your dough, right? Now, I, I like to look at this big gigantic lot every time I go out there, and I, it's the same size as my lot in Seamy Valley, but the way it's elongated, it looks bigger to me all the time. It just looks bigger. So I'm thinking to myself, and I've been thinking this for years, what can I put right inside there where people can come in and go out that's going to be profitable and make the project a better project, and, and be good for me, and be good for the city? And I don't have the, it's, you know, it's, I'm not, there's no magic here, I don't know the answer. I've got ideas, and I've done work on my ideas. I've, I've talked to car wash companies, and I've checked the volume of cars going up and down, and I've looked at the lengths of the car wash tunnels, and, and that's kind of my favorite right now. But I, I can't pull the trigger on that yet, I don't, I don't know enough. And somebody told me the other day, Starbucks is looking in, in Fillmore. I said, "Well, they already have one," you know, and they said, "Yeah, well, they want one on the other side of the street." Okay, maybe that would, I don't know what, what, I don't want a C-store out there. I don't want people coming in at 11 or 12 o'clock at night to a C-store, looking over 100 yards and seeing a bunch of RVs and going, "Well, let's go find a place to sleep. We've had too much to drink tonight." I don't want that. It's got to fit, okay? And I don't know the answer. All I can tell you is that I want more. I want something there. I don't know what the best thing is, but that's why I'm here. I want to free that up right inside the entrance to give me the opportunity to put something there. Otherwise, I want to be here. You know, why would I, why would I be going through this? Why would I be asking, why do I need to move a building? I don't. It's taking more time and more money. I'm only doing it because I want something else out on that lot, but I don't know what it is yet. Because even if I, let's just say, like, there's no question in my mind right now. I think a car wash is a great idea, but I don't know enough about it yet to put it there. I don't, I don't know enough about the tunnel size and this, you know, I just don't know enough. I'm not, I don't, you know, I haven't done, I haven't done enough work or learned enough yet. But that's the goal, is to add more. But let's not, I already have, I've met the retail requirement. I'm selling RVs, and I'm going to sell RV parts. That's another retail component. And, you know, I, I introduced Kevin to an idea that he didn't like, okay, the other day, but I kind of do like it, all right? I think, and I could be wrong, I think there's going to be a big movement toward the ADU and tiny home market. I believe that, that that market is going to explode over time. I think there's going to, you're going to see a lot of that. And I've met with a tiny home manufacturer to learn more about that. I thought this would be a great place to sell that product as well. But I'm still learning. I, I'm now understanding that in that business, one of the biggest obstacles right now is financing from banks. And the reason for that is, some of these tiny homes, and you all know what a tiny home is, right? It's basically travel trailers, and I'm in the business, they're all junk, okay? There's nobody makes a good one, they're all junk, okay? All of them. And tiny homes are built like the, our home, okay? They are not junk. They're, they're expensive. Where you could buy a 24-foot trailer for $24,000, the tiny home might be $140,000. It's a different animal, okay? But the reason banks don't want to finance them is because if somebody takes that and puts that behind a gate on a four-acre parcel and they quit making the payments, how do they get in there to get it? That's the bank's main concern. How do we recover, you know, what collateral do we have? Now, on ADUs, they can lien the house or lien the property, but, but I still believe there's, that that, that market is going to happen. I believe it's going to be a big market, and I, and I think the financing is going to get resolved. I, I've called my bank, which is a community bank, and I've got a meeting with the guy in charge of modular homes there, because I want to explore it with them. And, and if that, those are just the things I'm doing to figure out what to put there. I don't know what to put there. It could be boats, I don't know, you know? But I want something there, and that's why I'm here tonight, because I want something in that location. That's the prime location, right inside the, the entrance, you know? That's where you want people come in, get what they want, and get out. The rest of it, you know, people come to Building B in that new location, they're going to park their car, they're going to get out, they're going to walk up and down, look at RVs, they're going to come inside the, the building and talk to people and learn more, and, and we're experts at, at educating people on whether an RV is even a good choice for them or not. So we've got that buttoned up, I've been doing it for 15 years. But the new retail, I don't know, I, I haven't done lots of retail, I haven't done any retail in my life, other than what, than the RV stuff. So I've, I have people calling me all the time. I've got a guy that calls me every month that wants to do something on that property with me, okay? Now, he wants to do a C, I don't want a C-store, okay? I don't think it's the right thing. I don't think they fit. So I'm, he called to me tonight before the meeting, I don't know, he just read about the meeting or something, but it's got to be something that fits with what we have out there. We don't want people coming in late at night, and, you know, in most car lots and RV storage lots, they kind of lock down, a lot of them are fenced, you know, they close off, not like Bunnin', you know, you can walk in and look at cars at night if you want, but you don't want people out there at night, and we don't want people on the lot at night. So whatever we come up with, that's why I like car washes, you don't, most people aren't driving through car washes at night, right? You're doing it during the day. But I don't have enough information yet. But do I want to put something out there? Absolutely, that's why I'm here right now, because I want that space, the prime space on the whole lot, for additional retail. That's about all I can tell you.
Okay. Maybe if you put up a sign for retail space available, 5,000 square feet, or whatever that thing is, you know, might get you more interest, too.
That, that's a great idea, but my, right now, I got, I've got, everything, everything I own is invested in this new business I'm trying to build, okay? And remember, I told you I'm a small fry, I'm not like the guys across the street, right? I'm just trying to open a business. The demand for, this, this RV demand for storage and, and is, is through the roof. That lot is going to fill up really quick, all right? And then, like I told you, it's a thoroughfare for people going to the beach and people going to the desert. So we're going to sell RVs, we're going to service RVs, we're going to sell RV parts, and as soon as we figure out what else we can put on that lot, we're going to put it on that lot. It's just that we don't know today. But when that sign goes up, we'll get other people's ideas. But first, I got to get my lot done. That's why I'm here. Tonight, I'm here because I want to get the lot done, and I want to get it done right. I want to put that building over where it should be and free up that space. If, if you guys decide, well, you've kind of already said that you support the idea, but if you didn't, if tonight you would have said, "No, we want Building A, case closed, we build Building A, we got our RV sales, service, storage, and RV retail parts, and we're done." And I'm crying, okay, because that's not what I want. I want more.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so Kevin, so I think you gave us the four items.
No, I have it. The, the trick is to figure out what kind of leverage that's agreeable to the applicant and to the city, and come back to you, and give you the assurance that you're asking for.
Okay.
I, I know it's kind of late, but just hearing the more, and I'm hearing it in bold letters, in huge letters, has it been talked about of, of keeping all the buildings, just freeing up that real estate in, in Lot A? I know it's, it's a lot of money, and I understand that, and we're trying to save money to build something that's undetermined, but what about just moving it off and leaving that until you know, and then building something later? I don't, I don't know, is that too much complexity?
Well, that's basically what we're doing, is he's moving the building over, and then where A is.
But leaving it free.
Is freeing that area up to put other retail. I mean, it could be a Starbucks, it could be a car wash, it could be multiple things. But then if he goes and constructs a bill, if he, if he went in and said, "Fine, I'll put up A and B," then A may not be conducive to a retailer coming by and says, "Geez, I don't want it, that configuration," so.
I, I was thinking of grabbing A and moving it and leaving that open. I know it's, it's crazy, it's a lot of money, I understand.
Oh, you mean actually building A and then move, physically moving the building?
Yeah, from the plan, moving it and then building it.
I thought you meant building it and moving it, I'm like.
No, not after you build it.
Okay. Okay, so do we need a vote, then?
I don't think, I mean, there could be a motion to.
Move forward with approval of modification for, with the condition?
It wouldn't be moving forward with, it'd be, the motion would be to, the planning commission moves to direct staff to return with resolutions consistent with direction provider, with feedback provided by the planning commission. That would be, so there's, there's no approval, that would be at a future meeting.
Okay.
But first, we should, is there, what feedback we have from staff, don't know if staff has clear direction?
First of all, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Okay, let's close the public hearing.
And then we'll continue it, and we will work with the applicant on bringing you some assurance for retail. We'll, that's number one. Number two, work on some design for, along Highway 126 frontage. Number three, increase landscaping for you. Those three, those three categories.
Everybody can, everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, Eric?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so moving forward, planning committee development director comments?
Next item.
Next item?
Okay, so there, just to be, so there is no motion, but that direction has been provided to.
Right.
Staff. Does that, Kevin, do you want a motion, a more formal motion?
No.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so we move forward on that. So now we'll go to eight, a planning committee development director.
The only item I have to add is that we're, we're finally bringing forward, we hope, the conclusion of the housing element. Whenever I talk about the housing element, everyone's ears just close and they ignore me, and then, you know, I totally understand that, too. But hopefully, we'll be finally done with the housing element next, the next city council meeting next Tuesday. I don't have anything else to report, unless you have questions of me of any developments.
We had gotten, you had said us something about the park at, was that?
Yeah, that's just a little homework assignment for, to be fun. If it's not fun, don't do it. In the Bridges subdivision.
Right.
They have an 8.8 acre park. It's not designed yet, and I just wanted you, as planning commissioners, if you'd like to find out, or if you'd like to study what goes into the park, you should read that specific plan. I would recommend you photocopy the pages that describe that park, and highlight the requirements of the park, and submit that to me. We're, we're not going to be reviewing that anytime in the near future, but someday we will be, we'll have a park design.
Okay.
And I'm just trying to educate you now before you have the plans.
Okay, we just want to make sure we do all of our homework, right?
It's meant to be fun. If it's laborious, don't do it.
Okay, planning commission brief reports, yep? Aaron?
I have none.
Cameron?
I have none.
I don't have anything else, and so we will adjourn the commission.